Good morning, everyone. We're going to call to order the September 14th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. As with all meetings, we start off with an invocation. If y'all will all pray with me, please. I have your Father, we thank you for the many blessings and opportunities you give us each and every day. We say a special blessing for the first responders and those on the East Coast as this storm gets ready to come ashore, that you'll be with those folks and provide grace and love to them during their difficult times. We say a blessing for Mr. Parker here as well as he goes to his procedure this morning. We ask that you be with him and the families and medical technicians. We ask you be with those folks and that's in our heart and minds that your love and grace will be with them during their difficult times as they progress down their road. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, everyone. We're going to shut off Mr. Brandon Cox. Come on up, Mr. Brandon.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, we've had a little bit of an interesting last couple of weeks. About the end of August, actually, the last week of August, we had a reported human case of West Nile in Rankin County. First, let me remind y'all, just because it was a human case in the county doesn't necessarily mean it was from here. That's one of the things we have to fight so hard with West Nile is you could be in Louisiana, get bit by a mosquito, come home and three weeks later. But because of that, we take certain precautions. We are given by the Department of Health, they won't tell us where the person lives for their privacy, but they give us a one-mile radius map in the general area. With Rankin County with this one, not only did we spray that one-mile radius, it was centered on two of our zones that we usually spray anyway. We sprayed both of them three times each, just a precaution. We also got some extra techs out during the day trying to find a source. One of our hardest things to find, especially where we're limited to going, is water sources. And I mean, it can be a pot on somebody's back porch that has water in it that's been standing for seven days. And because we had a little bit of a miniature drought there in the middle of August, everything got dry, the puddles got smaller, and when it gets smaller like that, they concentrate and they get nasty, and that's where the mosquitoes love them. Fortunately, we've had all this rain from the aborted hurricane that came and hit the coast. I mean, it was damaging, but it wasn't near what we thought it was going to be. We didn't get near the rain here, but it has gone in and put fresh water in those holes and ditches and stuff, washed out the larvae that were there, so it's been helping us. And with the ending the way it did, or I should say tapering off, it's not going to cause more mosquitoes. It kind of come in, kind of like washing the pile off your car. Rain comes long enough to wash the car off and it moves out of your way. So it was good for us. We are preparing for whatever storms and water comes from the hurricane out on the East Coast to come to this direction, or the hurricane that's supposed to come up through Cuba, I think, at the end of next week. I don't think it's actually going to impact us, but we're taking some precautions to try to make sure if we have damage or we have large water areas, that we can bring some extra people in to treat it and stay on top of it. So far, we've had no more reported cases. Our trap numbers have gone back down. The thing about this particular case is I got a call from the Health Department the day of. Let me back up. We had picked up our traps that give us our numbers and we sent for testing. The trap in that area was particularly high, which is unusual as the pattern from this year. And we decided to send a sprayer out, somebody to spray that area that night. I got the call from the Health Department that afternoon saying we had a West Nile there, and then our trap did show test positive. So like I said, we went in, we did some, we found a couple of holes. I don't know how to describe it better than that. It's in a yard, big holes right on the side of the road, and it was just mucky, dirty, ugly water, had tons of mosquito larvae in it. We treated that. Like I said, we sprayed the area three nights in a row, and then we've gone back and sprayed again a week later and have been checking the trap. Of course, the day techs have gone back over that site to where the hole was, make sure it's still, that the levels have dropped down. So I think we should be okay in that area. All of our other traps seem to be running down. This time of year, between the end of August and beginning of September, is when West Nile starts showing up. But so far, we're doing pretty good in the numbers and our traps have gone down, so with this rain, I think we're going to be all right through the end of the season.
Will you do anything about the love bugs?
I cannot. And if you saw some of my spray trucks right now, one of them just looks like it's been painted black.
I know.
So, yes.
Yeah, love is in the air, that's for sure.
Any other questions for?
Brandon, you saying that we have one out in the county, not necessarily the whole county?
No. We had one person who was reported with West Nile virus, who'd actually contracted, been diagnosed, which takes, you get bit, it takes a week or so to incubate, another week or two, or longer to be diagnosed, because there's a lot of misdiagnoses, diagnoses. And sometimes, people are diagnosed with West Nile and find out it's just something else.
So they give you the one-mile buffer, can you not just go to the middle?
Yes, but it's, the way they do it, from what I understand, is they give us a one, but it's not dead center on the person's house to protect us from just driving right up to their house. But in that instance, because you know, you're in your neighborhood, you walk to your mailbox, you see your neighbors, you go to the corner store, and there's no guarantee you were sitting in your recliner and a mosquito got in the house.
That person could have been on the other side of county at a baseball game when that got bigger.
They could have been in Texas for the weekend.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, the one frustration I have with fighting this, and West Nile is our number-one enemy in this area. I mean, there's several other mosquito-borne diseases, and that's one we fight, but West Nile is the one we have the most risk of here. So, but it's, we're retroactive.
Yeah.
There's no way to tell where it is until we get numbers back. Now, we put traps out and test for it, but what I've seen is by the time we get enough mosquitoes to test in an area, and this is going by what I'm seeing in our Jackson office, I'm getting a call the next day saying, hey, we've got a West Nile person. When we get it back, Tuesday, we get the trap back and it says, we got some positive mosquitoes, and the next day it's, so I'm fighting a retroactive battle, I'm trying to prevent other people, you know? In Jackson, we have had 13 cases. There was a sewer leak, it just exploded, population of mosquitoes, and our traps were saying in three days later, of course, like I said, it takes three weeks before, you know, we're informed of a human case. And they could be anywhere in the world when that happens. But we do go in and concentrate in an area, and most of the time, what I like to do, if I can, is I spray the zones around it. I don't just do the one-mile buffer. You know, fortunately, this time, it was centered down the line of two of our zones, and I could just spray them. Every once in a while, it'll hit like in a corner, and I'll have five zone corners, and we have to just do that one-mile zone to start with, and then we'll spray those zones.
Anything else for Brandon? Brandon, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Appreciate what you're doing. I've probably had at least phone calls this year than I can think any year prior.
I have too. It's used, and it's pretty much been the same people that call every year, either want us to come check their house, or, you know, there's a thousand mosquitoes, and it just, but it's the same three people that call me every year. We've gotten to know them and know them by name, we go take care of them.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that.
I will note, I may not be here for next month's meeting. With this hurricane hitting the coast, we may get the call to go, and I'll be doing emergency spraying up there, but I'll let Ms. Janice know if I'm not going to be here. If not, I'll be here and see y'all then. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it. Mr. Reverend, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Me again. Last time we talked to y'all about transport and equipment, getting contracted people to do it, the whole district instead of individual. After that meeting, we reviewed a contract that Mr. Schley provided us, and we decided that the insurance requirements were going to be too difficult to monitor and make sure that everybody followed. So we went back to the drawing board, and we decided to approach the Sheriff's Department about using trustees with deputies to do it for us. So after talking to Sheriff Bailey, they agreed that they would do that, and even though it would require the purchase of, I think, four trailers.
I'm sure at this time, it's enclosed trailers.
Some enclosed trailers, which in the long run will be cheaper still. They are on board with that. Talked to Lauren, I think she talked to Craig, and they've agreed the insurance stuff can all be handled, and that would be a better idea, if y'all don't object.
We all go about a better idea.
The sheriff is good with it. I'm good with it.
Yep.
He is, he just, he's going to get some prices on some enclosed trailers and let us know about how much that would be.
Any other questions? Tanya, we appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Carl's not here, so we'll move on to old business. I need approval for minutes. So move, Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Sullivan is not here. Ms. Oster, you want to read it for us?
That's a request from Rankin County School District of Boyd, described as more tax assessment for the year 2016, and that's parcels number F2-41-20, and P11-11, and P11-8-10. That's now merged into the Rankin County School District.
Motion approved by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Harrison, you should have already been up here, Mr. Harrison.
He's touchy today. Northwest plays Brandon, he's just on edge right now, so we've got to just bear with him. Bear with him right now. It'll be easy over there tonight, Brandon. He's a little touchy.
All right. Request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a PFP cross-cabinet, connect cabinet utility along and across North Shore Parkway to be installed between Church Road and Countryside Drive.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. B, please.
Request approval for ceasefire utility permit to construct a fiber optic along and across Holly Bush Road to be installed between Highway 25 and Abbey Drive.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion?
Yeah, I also want to add one thing, just as a reminder, on those signs posted, it lets you know before they do it, before you release those permits, they need to understand the mess we've been through the last month and a half, you know, when you're coming, whatever, so.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. C, please.
Discussion of potential action for an employee of the Road Department to apply as a CDL third-party examiner through the Mississippi Highway Patrol.
Blame that.
What is that?
All right, that's going to be where he can give a driving test.
So he can get, he'll be qualified to give CDLs?
That's correct.
To only county employees?
Oh, yes.
Do a CDL test for only county?
Or the driving test.
Oh, just the driving?
Just the driving test.
Still got to go there for the written test?
Right. They'll have to go there for the written test.
Then he can give the driving test, okay. Is it, I mean, the reason because, just the convenience?
Yes. There'd be a lot of.
Probably get them dump trucks out of the parking lot over there.
And then. Where is our liability there? Our employee doing those tests.
He's actually being certified by the state to administer the test. So as long as he's following the state-administered CDL test, there's not any liability there.
Well, he should be certified.
Well, obviously, you know, your idea is, they start, if somebody has a wreck, they start looking where.
Motion approved.
Without his training, you know.
Yeah, as long as he's got certification.
Yeah. It'll be a big help.
I can certify my welders.
Because that's, that's the hardest part, we struggle with.
We often weld it now. We already got a motion to second. Our President, El Presidente over there.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I did.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Mr. Parker Jr., third, whatever.
Well, I like the way you sprung out of that chair, boy. I tell you.
I like it out there, too. He's out there.
I started just to stand behind him, just wait for him. A, LSRP 614, approval supplemental agreement, construction change request number one, and authority for present signed documents.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
B, Holly Bush Road improvements, approval paper request number four, an amount of $156,128.83 to Southern Rock LLC, an authority to issue check.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
C, Oak Grove Drainage Improvements, approval paper request number one, amount $127,886.38 to JWB Construction, Inc., an authority to issue check.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, I believe.
Yes, I make that motion to approve.
We don't need to discuss that.
Any discussion on that?
Well, let me say, man, I rode over yesterday, and, or day before yesterday, and literally, I pull up, there's a lady out there videoing it, and the construction company had only made one dip. That's it out of the whole project, you know? And one little, one little shovel, and I hope they didn't like hit some line or something right out of the gate, but.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, sir, second, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Second by Mr. Scott. Mr. Schley, I believe we could take A through J, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Actually.
Or not, sorry, A through M.
I think we go all the way through M, Mr. President.
Well, I got one off.
Oh, God.
You got a question? Well, let me find out. I just want to know where it was.
These are all to set public hearings, and so they're not for any particular action other than to make sure we have a hearing set for the date certain, September 27, 9:00 AM for each of these.
Well, I kind of like, I mean, I kind of like to know what, some of them are, are these some old ones that are coming back up, or some new ones? Are these all new?
Ms. Renee. All right, so which ones do you want to pull out, Jared? District one.
All District one?
No, there's only a couple of them.
That's half the page.
Huh? I know, that's why I said I don't need to pull them all out.
These are all, we've gotten recent ones.
These are recent? Okay, well, some of the properties, some of the properties in the same name, that's really, I was wondering if it was something in the past. Okay, that's fine.
I made the motion, we set the, those, approve those. The second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. How is we able to do this in a two-week period here?
Well, I believe we've already sent our notices out already, and so this is just your action to set it for a hearing date.
Okay, so we've already notified, we already did the 30-day thing already on all these?
Yes, or I think it's 14, or 21 days.
Yeah, because I remember setting these back a little while back. Remember we said?
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right.
I like Mr. Schley. Item N is a public hearing on the Peggy Salt conditional use permit at 109 Mission Drive, District One. Peggy Salt is seeking a conditional use permit to place a new 16-by-80 manufactured home as a second dwelling at 109 Mission Drive. Manufactured housing, a manufactured home used to be on the property, but it was removed in 2014. The home will be occupied by our daughter. It's a 5.162 acre parcel, it's a sewn RE1A. At this time, we will open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Peggy Salt conditional use permit. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. This time, it would be appropriate to take action.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. O, I believe we were going to table until October the 4th, I believe.
Yes, sir. If I may request that we, we have an official motion to table item O, which is a continuation of a review hearing on the Judy and Danny Hall property. I'd like us to continue that to October 4, 2018. If you have any questions, let me know.
Can we not go ahead and discuss all this we got in front of us, Sam?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to table it right now. The reason I say that is, there's, there's several.
We don't take any action.
Well, I don't know whether we can take action or not, but I guess the thing is, based on the inspection that was performed this week by Ms. Lawrence's department and the fire department guys, this place is not safe for occupants to be inside of. When you go through the list of things that they find, these are all true life safety issues inside this structure. So I guess my question to you is, the procedures to act from this point on the authority of the board or the fire department from that same point?
Yes.
On occupants that's inside this thing? You go down through the list of the things that we see, you've got windows blocks, you've got KitchenAid stuff inside of rooms that's unventilated, you've got fireplaces inside of it, tremendous fire load, and you have some areas of the house we didn't get access to. So with occupants living there, there has to be some responsibility, I think, come back on the county side of it, once we've put our eyes on this thing, for the safety of the folks that are in there. This is a dangerous situation.
Daniel, I thought that once it got to this level, and the fire department goes in, if it's a life safety issue, that they shut it down, not us.
And that's going to be the conversation I wanted to have, after we presented this items to us immediately with the fire department. I spoke to the fire chief and them, and they're waiting on our contact coming out of this meeting here today. It's definitely an issue for them. This is the first time that the fire department's been in access to this place. They didn't realize this was a commercial structure. They've never inspected it before, the fire department side of it. So their first access in the year was Tuesday, whatever day it was, I believe, Wednesday? Okay, so Wednesday of this week. So once you go in, from a fire department standpoint, and see these type of violations that are there from their inspector, we got some, we got some issues.
I would say, I mean, the fire department offered center from us.
Yes. They, from a jurisdictional standpoint, they do have the authority under state law to address serious life-saving health issues that involve a commercial structure. That's really more their purview.
Yeah, so with the variance on that came through, declares it as a commercial business at this point. So, and I guess that's kind of where we need to go to. Once we get out of here, maybe you and I can sit down. I told Scott that we're going to be in conversation with him immediately out of this board meeting to figure out the right process.
My strong suggestion would be that we defer the issues that are our code enforcement to whatever the fire department's process is to address life, safety, health issues that are under their purview, that we should defer. Let them take the lead on that. The halls were here this morning. She told me that, she's, she is a commercial insurance adjuster, and she has been hailed to North Carolina and was here only momentarily to ask for the board to defer. I told her that I would mention this on her behalf. I mean, unless we find out something that we don't know, it sounds to me like that it is a legitimate request for us to defer our action. I realize the fire department has their own thing, and we need to defer to them, but I felt like, from our standpoint, the situation with the hurricane and her being called away for that purpose, it was hard for me to not want to allow that to happen.
And I totally understand that side of it, as far as going to the aid of her job and stuff like that. My number-one concern, though, is the occupants that are inside that commercial structure. That's my number-one thought of. And then the second side of that is the hazard that's placed onto those fire department guys, if they catch a fire inside that structure. Because that place, according to the report that we've looked at right here, is not safe for them to enter, much less people to live in. So this needs to be addressed immediately, to be sure we put the proper safety blanket around those people, so.
So Daniel, I'm sitting reading some of the stuff, so just for our cover, you're saying that, you know, if a fire department goes in, see any other commercial business like this, they would shut them down?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Will they shut them down, or will you give them so much time to apply?
Well, I mean, it depends, it depends on the violation. It depends on the violation.
I'm just saying, though, that would be their call, not ours.
That's right, not ours, that's right. They totally autonomous from us.
Right, yes.
We're going to make, I hear a motion by you to table the, at least the county side, allow the.
Yeah, because the county side, I believe, is just going to be dealing with other safety violations that are out there. And Renee, maybe, can you address some of the county's, the county stance from it? Partially. Okay, Brian?
And I just want to say, you know, there are some elderly handicapped people in there.
Sure.
But now, Ms. Hall has, since, you know, all this started, she has done some research, and she, she did go in and put some smoke detectors in place. She put up exit signs.
We don't really think about the exit signs. We don't know if they are the glowing type, they're not electric.
Well, if it passed the fire department, I would bet it, they're right.
And she posted some evacuation plans on the, you know, so she's a tip, she has a tendency to do some stuff, that's all I want to say.
Well, are they supposed to be actually living there? It's obviously with the stove full, which is not.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, that's the thing with it, too. The report came that it was apartments, and truly, that's what it has been being used since. It was evident when you were in there.
Hey, Renee, if they were handicap people there, how were they getting in and out? Because it says here, they just installed a ramp improperly.
That's right. But there was no ramp.
But I mean, if you're handicapped, how do you, just get somebody to carry you upstairs?
There can be different types of handicap. Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what it was.
Mobile, not necessarily mobile.
There's some, there's some life, major life safety issues that are on this list right here. And when you go through those type of things, there is a responsibility back on the person that does the inspection side of this.
Well, you just know that they're going to be in here about their loss of income that's about to take place.
What were you saying?
I will make sure we're covered, and, you know, this fire department dealing with business like they deal with anybody else.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
One of the roads that we actually went into, the lady, we knocked on the door, she was on a walker, she couldn't open her egress door, it was stuck. So she was holding on to the walker and trying to push her door open, and it took her probably about 20 seconds to get that door open, because it was, it was stiff. Those things are issues.
They're major issues.
What about the guy that wouldn't let them upstairs?
Ms. Hall said that he was, he had post-traumatic stress syndrome, he was very angry, she was not going upstairs. We could if we were, if we wanted to.
Y'all could, but she couldn't.
No, she said he was very angry.
Oh, yeah.
And she was not going upstairs. We could if we wanted to.
That's just the person who wants to stay there.
Well, the safety of the, of you guys, I'm glad you didn't, from that same point on that side of it. But Craig, at some point, and when we get out of here, I do want to have the discussion with the fire department side of everything, to be sure they have our records along with what they have, they were inside it as well.
Right.
And that process goes, but there needs to be some type of action taken from that same point today.
The only thing that I didn't think about.
That's the fire department, not us.
Yes, and the only thing that I didn't.
It is, you're right.
I don't want to get crossed up in.
Well, you're not, you're not talking about the city fire department either, you're talking about a county fire department on a protection district that we fall over. So it still all comes together on that same side. So, it still all comes together on that same side. So, there needs to be some guidance in.
The only thing that I didn't really cover with the halls this morning, when I was hearing about this, I have to, I have to leave immediately to go to North Carolina. The only thing that I didn't cover with them is that there are twin tracks of an inspection process that have taken place. One is the county side, the other is the fire department's side. And the only thing that I could speak on was the issue that you guys would at least hear from me, her reasoning for not being able to proceed this morning, and take that into consideration. And that if the board was in agreement that a delay until October the 4th would be okay, that that would only apply to the county side. I didn't clarify that with them. I think it would be appropriate if we have a way to contact her. We need to make sure that she understands that the fire department will be able to make a call on the condition of this property irrespective of what this board may decide. That those two things are not joined at the hip. That you guys don't make the decisions for the fire department when it comes to life, safety, health matters. That's exclusively in their purview.
Two questions. Did you give her this?
She has a copy of that. She had a copy of that with her this morning. Yes, sir.
On October 4th, are you guys going to be able to provide us with what needs to be done from our perspective? So come October 4th, we'll be able to. Is this you?
Yeah, this is a.
Oh, I thought it was the fire department's stuff.
I think what the 4th will be, will be their opportunity to tell us what on this list has been completed, addressed to our satisfaction. My concern would be, obviously, is that they addressed some of this, but until we have an opportunity to go and look, we won't know that for a fact. So.
How are you going to get upstairs? Because obviously, there's.
We're going to ask, we're going to ask our sheriff to help us if he can.
Well, it sounds to me like he might be moved.
Yeah.
They still got his process, the eviction process, but yeah, I agree.
What I would suggest is that, just for the purpose of the record, so it's clear what we're doing, we're tabling the issues that we can address until the 4th to allow for a report back on where we stand. In the meantime, Daniel and I will discuss how to assist Scott Berry, if he feels like he needs any assistance, to assist him with respect to how the fire department wishes to proceed on the issues that they have under.
We don't need to be telling them.
No, 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 exactly.
We're not. It is their deal.
If he needs help, we will, we will be glad to provide it. But my preference would be simply, Scott, please act in accordance with what you believe your duty and obligation is as it relates to the condition of that structure. And we will support that.
Is there a motion to continue this public hearing on until October the 4th?
It's not a public hearing, is it?
Yes, it's a, it's a review hearing, and I think there's enough here now to where, and we have enough time between now and the 4th to where we can convert this. I think we probably need to go on and convert this into an actual nuisance and code enforcement hearing. And put them on notice to be here on the 4th. That's another reason why I feel like it's really more appropriate for us to delay this until the 4th. Because we asked for this, we short-circuited the process so we didn't have to comply with the timelines by calling this a review hearing.
So do we need to start the process now?
Well, it's, the process has already started. I just want to notify them that what this process is now is an actual code enforcement nuisance hearing, and that it will be set for the 4th.
Second.
The issue with the fire department, they don't have to worry about 14-day timelines and notice. That's a life, safety, health issue, and they can go, the minute they find out something's a problem, they can shut it down.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop, I believe. Any oral discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. P, Mr. Slay.
Yes, this is an acknowledgement of receipt of the 2019 ortho in a local agreement as approved by the Mississippi Attorney General's Office. Y'all have already approved this. It had to go up for approval of the AG's office. What this is, is that flight, flying the counties program. There's about nine counties that go together and secure an agreement that allows for a cheaper cost for each county for flying your parcels. So, that agreement has got to go to the AG's office. Been to the AG's office, it's gotten approved, and we're simply acknowledging it now back as an approved agreement in our records. There is no current plan or agreement of any kind for you guys to fly the county. But you have the ability now to secure that if you choose to do it. You have the ability to do it under this agreement at a cheaper cost.
Alright, I believe Mr. Chris Dino will, will on a quick second with us. Mr. Chris, come on up.
Hang on, we need to vote on this.
Yeah, we need to acknowledge, I just need to vote, acknowledge. Yes, sir, please. Action.
I'm just assuming we already, we've already voted on it. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
And if I may ask for one item to be added. This, if I may, I'm going to get you guys to add one item to the agenda. This is the completion of a process that was begun quite some time ago with our friends Lanter Delivery Systems. They purchased, first, we amended the lease to allow for Lanter Delivery Systems to take occupancy of 815 North College. This is the old Wreckit Ben Kaiser Building. You guys recall that we agreed with them that we would allow them to purchase that property. There was a process that we had to go through. We had to amend the lease to allow for the purchase. That was done a few months ago. They came back and triggered the purchase option under the lease officially. You guys acknowledged that. And now we're getting ready to actually close on the sales transaction. And I have the documents with me today that I need the board president to execute so that that closing can take place this afternoon. And so, we will be getting our first installment check of $65,000 after this closing occurs. Ms. Laura will be mailed a check for 65. We'll get five of those over time, total price of 325. The full price is 500,000, and the agreement says as long as they're here for a given period of time, and that they have the requisite number of employees, we will waive the remaining $175,000 balance. But they have to meet those obligations in order to qualify for that. Otherwise, they have to pay us 500,000 for the property. Okay, so all you're doing is acknowledging that we're closing on the transaction and that the board president is authorized to execute all documents that are required of the seller for the closing.
Motion by Mr. Cross to add this to the agenda. Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve by Mr. Gaines, approve it. And then the second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Slay. One more?
Just, just one, this is just simply a notification to you guys. I wanted to make sure that you were aware. Occasionally, we have an opportunity to help the tax collector with some collections. We get that privilege every once in a while. She'll call me and let me know. We've got some especially large accounts, personal property tax primarily. These are commercial businesses that owe taxes to the county under what's called the personal property tax. I have a lower my obligation. We have some accounts that get kind of large on us every once in a while. Don't know why. They just, it just happens that way. And so, every once in a while, I get an opportunity to go try to help make some collections. Over the past three months, we've had an opportunity to go out and collect on behalf of the county of about $200,000. So, that's directly to the bottom line, and I told the tax collector that I'd make sure that you guys were made aware of that. And so, that's, that was just some good news I wanted to report.
We appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dino, come on up for a quick second, please, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I would like to thank the board directors. They, with Mr. Cross's help and Mrs. Tesco's help, were able to help a woman in need, a single mom here in the Sierra Brennan with a nine-year-old that went to school. She was living with car boxes, and we were able to move her into one of my houses. I'd like to personally thank Mr. Cross for helping me.
Good day. Absolutely.
And with the board's permission, I was told it was an old airport in Rankin County off Starwood, Star Road that closed, a private airport. Is that true?
What?
A private airport in Rankin County?
I don't know.
Somebody may have a little strip in their property, but it wasn't an official airport.
Do I have the board's blessing to begin building a private airport in Rankin County?
We're not going to be in charge of airport operations and quality, that's an FAA thing.
I will speak with them, but I respect, I want to get those approval first.
Be the zoning and things like that.
I would like to ask Star Road, if that's okay. No, Star, S-T-A-R.
My suggestion would be, once you nail down the exact location, give Ms. Renee a call, and she'll tell you what it's on, and we'll, hopefully soon have our zoning ordinances. We do already, of what, for us or not principal. And it may require you coming in for a variance to it, maybe. I don't know, but until she knows exactly where you are, you know, then she can tell you how the applicable zoning would apply.
Thanks, sir. And so, Sam and I would like some of your time. We have a property located for the venue.
Sure.
We're having some issues with, what's it called? People. Easements, and before we invest millions of dollars, we'll make sure we have the driveway that goes to it. And make sure that no other parties, you know, with music and stuff, everybody's okay with any of public stuff.
I'll work. If you don't mind, give Ms. Janice a call, and she has the calendars, and she'll set something up that works.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And last thing, who's going to win a football game tonight?
World's best rank?
That's all.
World's best rank?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not wearing my red pants often.
Thank the Lord.
Ms. Law?
Item A is authority to advertise for written proposals for the collection of household hazardous waste, collection for Rankin County, and authority to publish that notice. It will be in November, probably the 17th.
Motion, Mr. Morris, a second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. B, please, ma'am.
Ratification of a rental agreement with H&amp;P Trailer Leasing for one year with a 30-day option to cancel, and that will be for three 40-foot containers and one 53-foot storage container. And these are used to store county road maintenance equipment during the construction of their new facility.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Morris, a second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. C, please, ma'am.
This is on our new Rankin County Courthouse facility. This is change order number five, dated September the 4th. It's an additional cost in the amount of $303,160 associated with adding Prime Logic to provide the CCTV access control and dress system for the new courthouse, which will also add a 30-day extension in the construction contract.
When do we just, what do they say, amount of possible completion?
April the 9th.
April the 9th? That would be for completion? Better get in gear.
Explain what that is.
You know, we had not, we had taken out the, all the equipment that was in there, hopefully to get a better price on it. And then, so it was left, I guess, in the contingent amount or whatever, or it was just set aside for it, and then this is the cost they got.
So, it's not really a change order in aspect of, we expected to spend this much.
That's correct.
That's right.
Well, we was expecting a better deal.
No, I think this did come in a little bit. Right, I think it came in higher because some things were added to it, I believe.
That's correct.
But it was taken out. It's not exactly in the contingency, but we knew we would spend it. It was held out of the original budget.
I thought this was 300,000 above and beyond what we had budgeted.
No, we're still within our money that we've borrowed.
I think from a full disclosure standpoint, it's probably in the neighborhood of 100,000 more than we budgeted for.
Carl thought if we pulled it out.
That we'd get a better price.
On its own island, it would be addressed at a cheaper price.
And we are 100% doing it where we can do video, courtroom video.
Wouldn't that be the closed caption TV?
I think the condo is all going to be put in there, but I don't know if this.
I don't know if it will actually be done, but it is going to be in there.
Right, I just make sure that we're providing for it, that we've not left that out.
That's what CCTV is. That's that closed caption.
Permission to approve?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. D, please, ma'am.
That is our misdemeanor facility and is change order number three, associated with several changes in a cost amount of $51,289.40 that will be deducted from the 75,000 contingency allowance in the construction contract. We'll leave a balance of 23,1710.60 remaining in the allowance. And I believe this also places that on the same date, the April 9th, construction day.
It will be completed same time.
We look like.
Most approved.
Yeah, on both of these buildings, but really, I'm more interested in the courthouse. Does it still look like we're on track to finish by the timeline we thought?
We've not heard anything from Carl suggested otherwise.
Well, I think last month when he was here, our last meeting, he had said around March, and with this new one that we just approved, it's going to push us into the very early April timeframe, and then that will all depend on the weather. Yeah, what kind of.
If they get it covered in, big thing.
Right.
But right now, it's not.
But they will be able to look at it right now and say, I think we're on schedule or not on schedule.
We'll ask Carl to tell us.
To be here October the.
There's a motion by Mr. Bishop, is there a second? Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion?
Y'all want to hear the Carl's work session, work meeting?
Yeah.
The end of the month.
Get an update.
Because I hear from all, once a week. Boy, y'all better get out if you think you're going to finish, Frank.
We'll ask for something as official as we can get.
I mean, just assuming we had perfect weather, that's what I, really surprising at this point. Gosh, the inside's like a house. It takes so long to do, once you get it covered in.
That's what's good about penalties and contracts, for all. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Alright, Ms. Austin, what else you got?
Authority and to enter a reimbursement agreement with AT&amp;T, whereas the county will reimburse AT&amp;T for AT&amp;T's cost in protecting, relocating, and lowering the section of the AT&amp;T fiber optic cable that's located at the site for the new construction of the Rankin County unit facility. And I believe Craig was going to mention to you something about the contract that they gave us.
Yeah, the contract from AT&amp;T is one that they use pretty much wholesale with everybody, whomever, that they have these sort of arrangements with. It doesn't matter if it's the government, or it's a private entity, or an individual. They use the same form contract. That form contract has language in it that doesn't comply with state law. And so, Ms. Laura and I had a back and forth on it. There's a paragraph in the contract that basically says, hey, county, if anything happens out there and somebody gets hurt as a result of what we're doing on your property, then you will agree to indemnify us and hold us harmless from any liability. The constitution, neither the constitution nor state law allows us to indemnify a third party in a construction contract. You just, you can't do it. So, I told Ms. Laura, I think the thing that we should do is simply note back to them, we're signing your agreement, but an entire section of it is unenforceable, and just move on rather than getting into this back and forth of, y'all take this out of your agreement and having to fight with the lawyers in Atlanta over why, and slow it might down. That's what I want to avoid. Let's just sign the agreement, acknowledge that we're signing the agreement, but paragraph four doesn't work. And it doesn't matter that we're just saying that. That's what state law is. So, that would be my suggestion. I wanted you guys to be aware that we were going to suggest taking that approach and make sure you were comfortable before we did it.
Well.
I'm okay doing it that way.
You're okay?
Alright. We're going to lose a month. We're going to lose a month. If I go back to AT&amp;T and say, pull paragraph four out of here, it's going to Atlanta. Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, for first, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything else?
I have nothing.
Anything else on additional business to be discussed, Mr. Board members?
We need to have Alan here so we can discuss our potential project.
Okay, Adam, come on up.
Unless y'all just want me to.
Or you're welcome to stay there. You got a microphone, whatever you want to do.
You're up now.
It's Maroon Friday.
I mean, you didn't really have to go. I guess you could sit at the table over there and do it, but. What you got in mind, man? Tell us, what are our options? What are our options? Like, can we spend any of it on, say, Andrew Chapel that we're just now getting started on? Will it qualify?
Andrew Chapel qualifies. But, I mean, it's qualified, but you still got to go through the application process. You know, there's congestion management, pavement management, bridge safe, bridge and safety. Safety is generally signals, is where you would apply for a signal under safety. Bridge is more bridge, not building new bridges and things, and you guys have done such a good job of your bridge. You probably don't have a bridge project that would qualify. Congestion management would be, would be where Andrew Chapel might fit in. That's where you're going to try to move more cars. You're adding a lane, or you could actually build a new road under congestion management. Pavement management is basically overlays. In the last several years, you know, at the MPO, we've seen a total, overlay used to be a very small part of that budget.
Or non-existent.
Twenty, yeah, at one point, it was non-existent. What of the 29 million dollars? We've got this time, 11 million of it is for pavement, which is, which the MPO votes on and sets that. You can, we can set that, the MPO can put that in any category that they want to, but it's 11 million in there now, so.
Wow.
But it's going to primarily be overlays.
Okay.
So, that's the categories you have.
So we're down to 18 million to fight over with the other counties.
Well, you know, I think there's 8 million. Every category I just named has a certain budget in it.
How much is in the congestion that you said?
I think it's 8 million. 4 million in safety. So, 8 million dollars is not, as you guys know, is not a lot of money. We start coming to reconstruct, adding lanes and doing things like that, and you got three counties that are going to be fighting for 8 million dollars.
What about red lights?
That would be in safety, and I think there's 4 million there. And so.
There's one area. Let's get through this other part. The reason why I asked about Andrew Chapel, the day we were here, Ms. Calendar said that these roads wouldn't qualify, that we wouldn't be able to get it done. So, I, that's why I wanted you here.
Yeah, no, I'm not, the roads, they have to be a minor, it has to be a major arterial, minor arterial, or a collector. It can't be residential. And Andrew Chapel, I think, is a minor arterial. And Andrew Chapel, I think, is a minor arterial.
So.
We can check that, which means it would qualify. We can check the map, there's a map.
Well, you know the scoring, the way you guys do the scoring. And I remember, we kind of got worked over by Madison County one time because they came over with all Rankin County officials, said, we're going to work together and everything. And then they went in and pulled a fast one on us. And, and the normal match is 80/20. And so, we didn't realize, and nobody ever told us, that if you do a 50/50 match, that you get way up the chart. And so, they ended up getting two projects and everybody else got left out, basically. And they got huge money for them.
Because of, you had a higher market.
And I, I'm thinking maybe, actually, some of this money may be from one of them, they never did possibly, that's rolled back in. But does that still qualify if we put a 50% match?
There is part, and it is a, you know, you put a bunch of engineers together to come up with a system. It's a, got a bunch of formulas and numbers and all this. And there is part of the formula that gives you, if all you, if all you can put in is you're wanting just 20%, you've got to put in 20. You get zero points. If that's all you're putting in is 20%, you get zero. If you put in 30%, you get a few more points, up to a max of 50%. So, if you have a million-dollar project and you put in half a million dollars, you get like 20, several points, I forget what it is, eight or 10 points, opposed to zero. So, yeah, you can put more money into a project and run your application right up to the top of the, that is part of the process.
What is it, is it the STIP or what is it, what's the actual list that you have to get on? What's the name of it? In order to qualify to even get funding?
Yeah, so it's the STIP, the Traffic Improvement Plan, the 2040 Traffic Improvement Plan, which is a map. It's the Central Mississippi Planning Development District approves that, prepares it, and the MPO approves it. So, there's a map and you can go online, CMPPD's website, and see that map. And it'll tell you which roads in Rankin County are eligible.
All right, well, this.
And I would have thought Andrew Chapel was, but I'll check. If Leslie knows, I mean, Leslie knows that project, so we can look and see.
Think it would be too.
I don't think we've ever thought about applying for any federal funds on this road. So, I always thought you, kind of like you had to have roads, you thought you were going to do something, put it on there. I didn't know it was automatically included just because it was the, you know, heavy traffic.
North Shore and Spillway, the project you got going right now is in this program.
Right.
I mean, that's, so it's the same program.
And one of the other things, on addition, piggybacking on that, that Spillway project's only going to go about halfway through the Spillway side. So, part of my thought was to finish up and maybe apply for the remainder portion of Spillway Road up to 471. I think this, the project that's going on right now, or it's fixing to get started right now, only runs into the area of maybe Belgro right up to Grants Ferry. But then from Grants Ferry all the way to 471, to me, would, would be a good thing to apply for as well to finish up Spillway Road. So, you'd have a whole.
To four-lane it?
No, no, just, no, just, no, it wouldn't four-lane it, it would just simply repave it.
Oh.
Bring it, an overlay for it. From that spot, it's an overlay from Spillway. Mike, I think that's right, Grants Ferry, we were stopping on the other one? Spillway to Grants Ferry?
The current project, does it, I don't think it goes all the way to Grants Ferry.
I just, I'm open to anything.
He Ward, He Ward, it stops at He Ward.
Let me ask a, let me ask a quick question. Can you have multiple, multiple applications?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and one may get accepted, one may not.
Yeah, and you can, and you can put a project in every one of the categories. You can put five projects in every one of the categories.
The other issue I was going to mention, still also ties in that Spillway Road deal, I know Jay and I have talked about it a little bit, is the traffic light up there where the new Shaggy's restaurants coming in, across the street from that soccer field. We constantly have to put deputies there with traffic coming over the spillway, going over the spillway.
That's a no-brainer one there, I think.
You want to make that application?
Yeah.
The, the traffic light right there, and, and it could, it could maybe require a lane adjustment somehow?
Well, it'd be a turn, probably.
Set up for it.
Some sort.
That could still be safe, the turn lane can still be part of a signal.
Part of their signal light area.
You know, that area right there now is being done by PRV. And if we could get them to take that on, that'd be better, rather than us having to submit it as our project. But we do want it done, for sure. Alan, as, all right, let's say, we, we know we want to prioritize this light, we want that one. And would we less likely to get other funding if we qualify in another category for, for funding?
Not supposed to. The numbers are supposed to go through and speak for themselves. Some of this, some of this, and we've done, we've tried, the ITC, the Technical Committee of the MPO, is, has tried to make it where it's, it's very objective and not subjective at all. But when, you know, so you can look and say, I'm going to assign one point or three points. Well, if everywhere, then that, that becomes subjective. And if everything through a process gets three points and somebody else gets one point, then that gets where a different person looking at it could put two points or one point. So, it's, it's as objective as I think we can make it, but I'm not going to sit there and try to convince you that it is a totally objective process.
Then the board gets to go in there and change it.
Yeah, right.
If you look at it, Brandon, and Rankin County gets two contracts, you know, Hans County or somebody, that's the, well, they got, you know, six million dollars to you.
Well, I can tell you, for the most part, while I was on the board, we pretty much just took the recommendation of the Technical Committee.
Right. Still, they're changing.
But you're right, if we get.
But in the Technical Committee, they're still going to be doing exactly what you just said.
Yeah, the Technical Committee does, which, you know, I'm on there for you guys. I'm the member on the Technical Committee for Rankin County. The, and, and Central Mississippi does a tremendous job, really, of trying to sit down and put together as best we can, where we literally, from an engineering standpoint, look at these projects and rank them based on total engineering, you know, parameters and not other things.
So, we need to make a decision today about what we would try to do?
Yeah.
Andrew Chapel.
Well, hang on, if we were to say, well, look, we know we're already committed to doing Andrew Chapel. And if we did a 50% match on it, that would give us a good likelihood of getting funded.
Well, and, and another big thing, Jay, is readiness is part of the formula. How ready are you to build a project? You already have plans and specs very close. Most of these projects are a lot, I'm not going to say most, a lot of these projects that be submitted will have nothing. It'll just be there in their infancy. So, if Andrew Chapel is, and I'll check with Leslie, make sure, but if it is, you have a heads up there, you're going to get a bunch of points in readiness category. You're ready to go.
That's what they're saying all along. If you look closer, the closer you are to shovel-ready, the better you will be.
As I understand it, the disadvantage on Andrew Chapel would be right-of-way acquisition, that you don't have all yet.
Yeah.
And that can slow things down. So, there's a whole nother category is right-of-way acquired. You know? And so, if you, if you don't have to go get a lot of right-of-way, you get more points. If you have a lot of parcel, there's a lot of parcels on Andrew Chapel. That's going to be a disadvantage on Andrew Chapel.
What is the timeline on having to expend these funds?
Four years, but there's deadlines in there that you have to make.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll be able to make it. We'll probably still be buying right-of-way four years from now.
No.
Well, I mean, we've been on Gunner for two or three, I know.
Well, I think somebody kind of hooked up on Gunner though.
But we can put an application together, a draft application together on all three of these, Andrew Chapel, the Spillway East overlay, and the signal on Spillway Road to Shaggy's. We can put draft applications together and run through the scoring real quick to see where we think they're going to score out and, and then, and then see how much money.
But you know, a lot of them don't have right-of-way. And one particular county, they usually don't have anything, but they want the money. They don't have right-of-way, they don't have hardly anything. And they're the ones that hold it up and then they're pushed to meet a deadline. And that's why y'all changed the, the timeframe, or that's why you changed it that way, where you have to meet this. So, you've been tied the money up for eight years and never have anything.
Correct. It used to just be you had to have the project completed by date.
Right.
Now, you have to have plans and specs by a certain date. You have to have advertised by a certain date. And you will, and we have recommended to the MPO in the last couple of years, and they've said, where people have lost funds.
And, and, all right, and Flowwood, Flowwood's usually got several that are right-of-way everything, they're just sitting there needing funding. So, they.
One thing to.
Madison too, sometimes.
Just as a reminder to you guys, that kind of feeds into this process, that I hope will end up helping us long-term, is y'all's decision to use professional right-of-way acquisition agents, who regardless of what is the project, is going to be totally local funding or state funding or federal funding. They conduct the right-of-way acquisition process the same way every time, and it complies with the federal act. So, what that means is that if a project could qualify for federal funding, your right-of-way acquisition process will allow you to compete for those dollars. And I just mentioned that because y'all made the decision to do that. And I, I appreciate the wisdom of that. Now, looking at it, if we were 75% through the, through the Andrew Chapel right-of-way acquisition process, which I think that's where we are on the title side, if, if we weren't in compliance with the federal act, as far as how those acquisitions were undertaken, that would hurt us. We would end up somewhere in this process finding out, we got to go back and start over with our right-of-way acquisition. So, I'm grateful that we're taking this approach with our right-of-way acquisition. I would suggest we keep doing it this way. It's more costly, but in the long run, you qualify for the dollars.
All right, so getting back to our qualifying for multiple projects. All right, safety, we know we want to do one, possible Andrew Chapel. What about the, what Daniel suggested, overlaying?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I've written here is we'll, we would try to go in on, as a congestion management project on Andrew Chapel, a, just a pavement management category project on Spillway Road East from Grants Ferry East to 471. And then, a safety category project at Shaggy's on Spillway Road on the west end, safety, which it may include a turn lane in there, but that, that'd still be the safety project.
Yeah, it's also that soccer field, you know, use soccer field, stuff like.
So, those, that's what I've written. So, that's, that's one project in three. And the only other category would be bridge, which I don't think you have anything that's going to qualify.
All right, is it all good with that?
I am.
All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
What else of additional business, anybody? Is there a need for executive session?
I don't think I want to ask.
What?
Renee, did y'all check on that mobile home anymore? We're talking about just sitting there? No, well, well, I didn't think about that. No, yeah, new and old and others just sitting there. It's on, yeah, just past North Church Street. I mean, Church Street, I'm sorry. Clear Church Road, yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, it looks like, but Lord knows, I'm scared to know where it goes. Where they going to move it?
Works on the other.
All right. There, there's a short knee for, Jay, there's a short knee for executive session, do I hear a motion to discuss the need?
Can we, before we move on, we just need to finish up our discussion on our plan. Because we, I don't know if Alan has firm knowledge of what we want. Yeah, instructions, like, I really think we need to do a 15% match on the Andrew Chapel.
I think I look 50/50 across the board.
I'd go 50/50 across.
On all the projects.
Is that, is that work the same on the other projects too, on the safety end? Okay.
Why don't you figure that scoring and figure that, and see, that 50/50 should bring us way up. I mean, you know how it's going to score.
It, it, 50/50 is going to bring us way up.
Yeah.
We just, we just got to be willing to decide if that miracle happens and then take all three of our applications, where we're going to come up with the money to pay it.
Well, the amount of money we're going to save from Andrew Chapel would be able to pay for the others.
Probably won't get all three.
Probably won't, yeah. All right. Everybody agree with what Alan needs to do now? He's, he's got his marching orders for the 27th?
Good, love you.
Yep.
All right, is there a motion to discuss the need for executive session? Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Need to go and discuss for the purpose of litigation?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second, by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Y'all please vacate the room. Want to go?
All right, thank you. Do good.